I am speaking, oh, there you go.
Good evening and welcome to the Beverly Hills Unified School District Board of Education Organizational Meeting. Today is December 13th, 2022, and the time is 5:10 PM. I would like to, first of all, acknowledge and welcome all of our elected officials and former board members and board presidents that I see here in the audience today. Thank you all for taking the time to be here, all of our commissioners and committee members, and all of our community. It's really wonderful to see everybody, and thank you for coming here today. I also would like to acknowledge that today, our city manager, George Chavez, is retiring at City Hall today at 7 o'clock, and I would like to invite you all to try and see George later this afternoon and this evening, so that you can thank him for his service. So, thank you all for being here. I'd like to open the meeting by asking Mrs. Marcus if she would lead us in the flag salute. Thank you. I'd like to ask Dr. Stern if she would read our land acknowledgement.
Our hope is to inspire others to take action in learning and supporting indigenous cultures. One way of honoring these communities is through land acknowledgement. BHUSD acknowledges that we are on the Tongva land.
Thank you. Mr. Margot?
Our mission is educational excellence. Our vision, our students will realize their full potential to thrive with integrity in a complex, changing world.
And Mr. Lehelimi?
I'll be reading our community pledge. The BHUSD community acknowledges that in order to achieve educational excellence, we must act with integrity and respect for each other and our learning environment. Therefore, I pledge to model civil behavior and respect in all communications and in public while maintaining a culture of honesty, listen and acknowledge differences of opinion, do my part to protect an inclusive culture in which we honor the relationship between all school community members, and honor our learning environment, including how we take care of our schools and personal property. By holding ourselves and each other accountable to this pledge at all times, we will promote an environment of educational excellence that will allow our entire BHUSD community to thrive.
Thank you very much. And tonight, as is the tradition with our organizational meeting, I am really pleased and honored to introduce Ethan Smith and our Madrigals singers for this evening. Thank you to the Madrigals. It's always a terrific sign when we hear the Madrigals sing, especially at this time of the year. It really puts you in the holiday spirit, and we know it's officially the holidays. So, thank you very much. May I have approval of the agenda, please?
I will move the agenda.
All second? The motion was made by Mrs. Marcus and seconded by Dr. Stern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0 with a preferential vote from Alex Baden. First, we have public comment, and I would like to invite up... We have a public comment for this item. Nushin Meskadi. Welcome.
Thank you. I just wanted to take the time and come... First of all, when you see performance like this from our students, makes us understand what a great job our superintendent, our teachers, and our Board of Education is doing, producing such great programs. So, thank you for that. I've seen them, and I've seen the drum line at different events. So, these are some of the things that we see out in public now that our kids are grown and we don't necessarily come back. But, so, thank you for everything you're doing. Mary, I just wanted to take a few seconds to basically wrap up everything that you have done for the year that you were president. You have been one amazing board president that has been pretty much everywhere. Everywhere I looked, you were there. And bringing awareness... I mean, I personally, I can say for myself that I was so disconnected from the district as much as I wanted to stay connected, but it's hard. But, your outreach and, you know, keeping us informed, you've done a fabulous job. You have a big shoe to fill, but I'm sure the followers are gonna learn and follow your good lead. And I want to congratulate the incoming president and also Gabe for doing such a great job filling in when you were asked. I remember you when you were a student, when I served on the Board of Education, and you have been... You were a great student when you were in our school, and you did a fabulous job as a board member. So, thank you for that. Rochelle, you know, you are amazing, always. Kids love you in the classroom when you were there, and they love you now as their board, you know, leader or educational leader. And everyone, all of you have done fabulous jobs, so just wanted to make sure that I highlight you and also congratulate Judy. As an incoming board member, it's... It is only about time. You know, I know that I served from 2005 until 2009 with the number of students we have. Not that we do anything special for, you know, the Iranian descent students, but being able to connect culturally makes a huge difference. And I know all of you have done a great job connecting culturally with the community as a whole. But, having someone like Judy with her background, not only professionally, but culturally connecting the bridge between the community would be fantastic. So, congratulate you, especially congratulate Dr. Bregu for a fabulous school district you have put together, the staff, the teachers, the administrators, everyone is fabulous, and we are in great time, and hopefully we'll have great production, because these kids are our production. Thank you.
Thank you, Nushin. Next, for public comment, we have John Hanover.
Thank you very much. I would like to really address my comments to my wife, Mary Wells. And I know that I have three minutes. I don't think it really takes three minutes to say I love you. I could get that out in next to no time, but I do have kind of a unique perspective on this year of your presidency, that I wanted to share some comments about that. And first of all, I just want to say, you know, how proud I am to be your husband. I think that you've done a terrific job. And, you know, I know that you came to the board with kind of the purest of motives and the most altruistic sense, and I'm very proud of that. We don't have children in the district. Maybe one day, we'll have grandchildren in the district, lucky as my son, but right now, we don't have children in the district. But you have come to this with the idea that you wanted to make the school district the best it could be for the children, for the teachers, for the parents, for all of the stakeholders, and I'm particularly proud of that. The other thing that I think people in this room cannot recognize that maybe I uniquely see is how hard you work to do what you do. You know, I'm there when you have the nights that are 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning, 4:00 in the morning, when you're working. Every weekend day, I know that you spend at least part of the day working on board matters, thinking about questions that are going to be important to the board, trying to wrestle with issues that were only designed to make the board better and to make the school system better. And so, for that, I'm particularly proud. I think that what you've done in this year as president is such a reflection of who you are, that I want to mention a couple of those things. First of all, the fact that excellence is the mantra of the board really speaks to who you are, and everything you do, and trying to find excellence and pursue excellence. And so, the fact that you have kind of shared that with the board and translated that to the board in some palpable way is no surprise to me and really should be no surprise to the board. The fact that you have lent your experience in construction to the board, in kind of putting the program that I think needed to be put back on the right track, on a footing and a position that can succeed, and understanding how important it is for the buildings to house the students and to provide a space for them to succeed is really who you are and what you believe in, in terms of the construction for the school district. I think that, you know, who you are in adopting the community pledge is really critical. It's a reflection of your character and your integrity, and wanting that to be a critical part of the district and wanting that to be so important to everyone in this room, everyone who participates in the school.
It's hard to follow. You're feeling the pressure. Okay, our next item on the agenda is the board president outgoing remarks, so I'm gonna step up so I can do that. Good evening, everyone, and again, thank you all for being here. I think this is a hard act to follow my husband, so thank you, John. I really just want to have this opportunity to speak to everybody about our board and our district and all that we've accomplished this year. One year ago, when I was installed as board president, my vision was to keep our schools open in a safe and supportive learning environment with the formation of a board that was a stronger, more effective team and partner with our district leadership and school community so that we could collectively deliver the highest quality educational experience for our students. I called for better oversight of our bond-funded construction and security programs and I wanted to bring this divided community together and as we build stronger partnerships, including with our city, to raise the stature of our district. Well, as I look back on this year, it truly is astounding how much we've accomplished together and I want to thank each and every one of you for making this possible. I can't tell you how proud I am of this board, Dr. Bregy, his staff, and our community. We have so much to celebrate and we have so much to look forward to. I would like to touch on some of our significant highlights from this past year. You may remember at this time last year, we were contending with COVID and an alarming increase in Omicron cases. We began the new year with drive-through home tests for every student and staff member, Rebecca remembers this well, and to successfully keep our schools open, we added support for quarantined students and staff and as a community, we addressed COVID, COVID testing, mask wearing, and vaccines. We successfully negotiated with our agreements with our education partners and we directed our resources to address learning loss by not reducing our teaching staff and by providing students in need with tutoring and summer school. We added to our programs, providing social and emotional support for our students and staff, including through our Norman program and maximizing our partnership with the Maple Counseling Center. Student and parent programs have included and addressed anxiety, stress, suicide prevention, and the fentanyl crisis. As everyone knows, this board identified a multitude of issues and made the hard decisions necessary to make the bond program to modernize our school facilities and security programs more effective and efficient. We completely restructured both the construction program and the security and safety program to provide transparency and accountability. The TCDS contract expired and at the end of that term, we contracted with Fondre Salari, licensed qualified professionals who I can say with confidence are working and negotiating on behalf of this district, along with our newly hired Executive Director of Construction, Will Karat, and our Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, Raphael Guzman, all under the direction of our Superintendent, Dr. Bregy. We've already confirmed that we have saved the district millions of dollars as a result of the changes that we have made and that amount will surely increase. We've also addressed our existing facilities to improve and better maintain these facilities while our students are still occupying them. Hawthorne and Beverly Vista Middle School were improved last summer and with the high school, when the students return in January, the Conheim Building, after needing a much, after recently having a long overdue cleaning, will be freshly repainted and there will be significant improvements in the interior, with the exterior to soon follow. Our security program is now stronger than it has ever been before. Our new Executive Director of School Safety and Security, Mark Mead, is working with all of the sites on emergency protocols, ensuring that all the schools have the necessary emergency supplies and are properly trained. All of our cameras are up and running and we are continuously monitoring... The lights are not up and running. And we have, and we are effectively collaborating with the city. We now have true leadership in this area, creating and executing security and safety plans, and we have strengthened our collaboration with the city to maximize our resources and increase our safety. We even increased the SROs for our school. We can say with confidence that the money we are spending on security is increasing the safety of our students. As a board, we have made changes that have strengthened and improved how we operate. My first goal as president was to ensure that the board was better informed so that we could make better decisions. We have made changes to our meeting agendas, the board meeting structure, and our committees in order to improve how and when information is shared with the board. The board reviewed and revised all of our board bylaws, which had not been done since 2009. We revised our governance handbook and these changes have put structure in place for how we work together and collaborate with Dr. Bregy and his team. The overarching principle is that accountability and transparency should permeate all board actions. As a result, the board, Dr. Bregy, and his team have partnered and collaborated like never before as we have spent several planning sessions addressing our mission, our vision, and strategic plans and how to be the lighthouse district that we all believe that we can be. We began by refining our mission statement, which you've heard about this evening, which is educational excellence, and this is our unity of purpose and this is the lens which we look through for everything. We revised our vision statement to our students will realize their full potential to thrive with integrity in a complex, changing world. We have further defined our core values to the following: excellence, integrity, wellness, inclusion, safety, and community. Through a series of study sessions, we have reviewed and revised all of our board policies for instruction and we have aligned our policies and administrative regulations to meet with our mission of educational excellence. Again, most of these policies had not been updated since 2009. We have launched our revised strategic plans at the start of the school year and have already had our first formal check-in last month. We continue to monitor our progress and look at the data and the metrics that we have put in place as we focus on educational excellence. Under Dr. Bregy's leadership, our new Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, Raphael Guzman, is advising and ensuring that our resources are aligned with our strategic plan and identifying additional funding opportunities. Raphael is working with our auditors to ensure that we make the recommended changes necessary to protect the taxpayer dollars and to ensure that the money goes where our taxpayers intended. We have new legal counsel for our construction projects to support Raphael and his team and in addition, we are looking at all of our agreements as we move forward with consultants and to guarantee that our district's interests are represented. It's been a busy year. To address our declining enrollment, we allowed the grandparent permit and we expanded our TK program to the maximum allowed. In addition, we are in discussions with the city to maximize our resources and develop daycare, after-school care, and preschool programs, as well as how to best utilize Hawthorne once El Rodeo is complete. Our vision is an early education center that includes wraparound services and enrichment programs to support our community and working families. This vision, along with the development of the district office space, are the result of our community-led 7-Eleven committee and we're grateful to them for staying involved. We have worked hard to bring this community together. We've introduced the first-ever BHUSD community pledge at the beginning of the school year to set the expectations and the tone that we set out, that we hold out for our community. It has been a huge success. In addition, we've added the community spotlight to our board meetings to highlight the many different groups that form our community to promote understanding and empathy which strengthens our community. During the year, we have learned and shared more about Asian-Americans, Hispanic heritage, Native American indigenous people, the focus on human rights in Iran, the rise in antisemitism, mental health challenges, and the Juneteenth holiday. The board passed a resolution in support of the women of Iran and their fight for human rights, Women, Life, Freedom. We've recently also added a land acknowledgement to our board agenda that recognizes the Tongva people. We have strengthened our partnerships with the police department, the fire department, city council, Chamber of Commerce, Rotary Club, and the many commissions and committees within the city. We've participated with the Human Relations Committee with their civility campaign and Next Beverly Hills and their Next Night Street Party and the National Night Out with our police department. And last but not least, we've worked with our Chamber of Commerce and our many businesses to help support our career and technical education program. All of these efforts raise the visibility of our school district and create opportunities for the city, in the city, for our families and students. We, as a board, are making ourselves more visible, partnering with the community and promoting public education within and outside of our city. This year, I was appointed to the Office of Secretary-Treasurer with the Los Angeles County School Trustees Association and in this role, I will work with school trustees throughout the city and with state legislature. As you can see, we have made monumental strides to improve this district. The board may not have always voted 5-0, but we have successfully built a strong team with strong governance and we have moved forward together. We are focused on educational excellence and we still have a long way to go, but we now have a foundation that is in place to get us there. I'm excited for our future. I welcome with open arms our newest board member, Judy Manatary. And I look forward to passing the reins to soon-to-be board president, Noah Margot, and to support him this coming year in his presidency as he continues to move us forward in a positive direction and to bring our team forward. We cannot be successful without the support and participation of this community and I want to give a heartfelt thank you to everyone who cares so deeply about our students and our education because we cannot do this work without you and all of the things that we've been able to accomplish this year were with your participation, so I want to thank you all. I have truly enjoyed my time leading this board as president and I thank you for trusting me and supporting me this past year. Most importantly, I have to thank my family, in particular, my husband, John Hanover, and my son, Jacob Hanover, who's here this evening. Public service, although immensely gratifying, is consuming, it's arduous, and it's invasive. We simply cannot be committed public servants without the support of our families and I am no exception. Thank you, John. I love you. And thank you to this board, to Dr. Bregy, to all of his team, and most importantly, to our community for making this one of the most incredible, amazing, monumental years ever. Thank you. I'd like to invite up Mr. Margot.
I got every hit thing here but the Ginsu knives. Colleagues, I need a motion for the approval of the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Mr. Halimi, seconded by Mrs. Marcus. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously and I'm gonna read it. Whereas Mary Wells has served as president of the Beverly Hills Unified School District from December 2021 to December 2022, and whereas she has worked energetically to solidify a strong relationship with the BHUSD board and the superintendent's cabinet in developing and implementing a robust and actionable strategic plan with the mission of reaching educational excellence, and whereas she has been a powerful advocate on behalf of the BHUSD community in creating a community spotlight where the most notable impact has come through hearing the stories of marginalized minority groups, and whereas she has collaborated effectively with BHUSD board members, administrators, and staff in authoring a community pledge acknowledging that in order to achieve educational excellence, we must act with integrity and respect for each other and our learning environment, and whereas she has been a determined supporter of reviewing, revising, and successfully updating hundreds of board policies which have been outdated for almost a decade, and whereas she has worked earnestly in deepening the relationship between the City of Beverly Hills and the Beverly Hills Unified School District, now, therefore be it resolved, that the Beverly Hills Unified School District Board of Education does hereby honor Mary Wells for her leadership and outstanding service on behalf of the Beverly Hills Unified School District presented this 13th day of December 2022. So, now when you appear on Zoom, that has to be hanging in the background. Along with this wonderful thing, which is gonna hang right next to it, I hope, if you start collecting those, that's the outgoing president's gavel. And with that, I would like to welcome my colleagues to make comments. We'll start with you, Alex.
President Wells, thank you so much for being such a wonderful and welcoming board president as I entered my term as new board member. I have really admired your creativity and innovation with the community spotlight, bringing in so many incredible guest speakers and highlighting important months of celebration and of awareness. But I also really admire your initiative with enhancing our relationship with the city because I really do see you everywhere and you do so much throughout the district and throughout the city and it's been an honor not only serving on this board with you, but also with Team BH to, so that we're both kind of bringing that into our role. And I'm excited that you'll be coming over here with me.
Me too.
Well, Mary, I don't know what to say except that you said everything that you've done this year, which has been unbelievable. The work that you put in, what you did, and the way you just told everybody that you did is, it was incredible. I really, I don't know what else to say because all I can say is you've been an amazing, an amazing president. It has been my pleasure to serve under you this past year. From the start, you brought such energy and understanding of what a president should do and what your role is. It was amazing. You accomplished so much during the past year and I know you will continue to create ideas and suggestions for to carry on. One little point, I'm grateful for the crash course you gave me in Construction 1A because it helped me make better educated decisions regarding our program. You will continue to share your ideas and perspective with the same knowledge and that you showed... I have really admired your creativity and innovation with the community spotlight, bringing in so many incredible guest speakers and highlighting important months of celebration and of awareness. But I also really admire your initiative with enhancing our relationship with the city, because I really do see you everywhere, and you do so much throughout the district and throughout the city, and it's been an honor not only serving on this board with you, but also with Team BH, so that we're both kind of bringing that into our role. And I'm excited that you'll be coming over here with me.
Me too.
Well, Mary, I don't know what to say except that you said everything that you've done this year, which has been unbelievable. The work that you put in, what you did, and the way you just told everybody that you did is, it was incredible. I really, I don't know what else to say, because all I can say is you've been an amazing, an amazing president. It has been my pleasure to serve under you this past year. From the start, you brought such energy and understanding of what a president should do and what your role is. It was amazing. You accomplished so much during the past year, and I know you will continue to create ideas and suggestions for to carry on. One little point, I'm grateful for the crash course you gave me in Construction 1A, because it helped me make better educated decisions regarding our program. You will continue to share your ideas and perspective with the same knowledge that you showed as a president, and I look forward to two more years serving with you, because you've been amazing, and it has been my joy to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Rochelle.
President Wells, your husband, John, said a lot of what I wanted to say. I was gonna leave out some of it, the "I love you" part, the "thank you," but you, and so did Nushin. You are one hell of a public servant. It has been incredible to work with you for the last year. There is so much that I wanted to accomplish over the course of the last year, only being here for one year, and I feel like I was very lucky, and it was very poetic, that I got to serve in your presidency, because it meant that we got to work together on so many shared interests that we had. And so, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for your leadership. You set the tone for the year, and all the accomplishments that you named, you made it possible. You really roll up your sleeves, you educate yourself thoroughly on all of the issues. It doesn't surprise me that you were up till 3:00, 4:00 a.m. at all, because I think we could all see on the board firsthand how much time you actually put into this role, educating yourself and being able to be thoughtful about all the issues that came in front of the board. I'll also say that one of the most, one of the best attributes that I saw from you is also your decisive nature. When you've studied the issues, you come to a conclusion, and nothing is gonna convince you otherwise. I think I tried a couple times, but we were generally very aligned. You focus on the big picture, you're strategic, you're thoughtful, you're really all the things that we would want in public service, both for the school district but also for our city. And I hope you continue to serve, you have another two years here, I hope you continue to serve as long as you want, but I hope you continue to serve this city, because we need you and more people like you. So, thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
It's true, there has been a lot of great things that have been said, but I tried to capture a few that stayed with me. Mary is a friend to many in the school community and the city of Beverly Hills. In her tenure as president, she relentlessly fought battles which were not popular, yet she persisted in seeking answers and solutions for some of the district's most difficult problems. Mary emanated love and positivity with the shepherding of our district's first community pledge. And as a commitment to ensuring that all community members share their story, their voice, and our support, Mary set the community spotlight into action. Mary, thank you for your grace, skill, and service to our students.
Thank you.
I would just say, when you do this, the job of board president, it's not something for the faint of heart. I mean, yes, it's an honor and a privilege to lead a school board, but it's also a tremendous, tremendous commitment. And Mary, you made that commitment to our community seamlessly. You spent hours every week staying on top of every responsibility you were entrusted with. Even though you did not have a child on the football team, you attended the games. Even though you don't have a child in choir or theater or orchestra, you attended the performances. You attended conferences and seminars and committee meetings, and you've given your all toward everything this past year. Thank you for leading the charge that is this school board, and I look forward to continue working with you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Wells, it has been quite a year. It's been said many times, some of the accomplishments, something that you said in the very beginning when we started to work together, and for those that don't know, I work really closely with the board president when it comes to communication and putting meetings together, so we spend a lot of time together. One of the things that you had said a year ago is to really be sure that we capture every moment in time with the things that we do, because the work that we do moves fast. There's so much work that comes in front of us, there's thousands of pages of materials to review, and you had said in the very beginning, to make sure that we just capture those instances when we're moving forward as a school district, and I think that you were able to articulate that tonight. We, in the very beginning, started to have conversations about what was working and not working about our strategic plan, and you had more questions for me than I would have imagined anybody ever would about our strategic plan, but what was so nice was that you started to ask questions using the theme of excellence, and you started to ask, okay, I understand that, what would an excellent school district do in this situation, and what type of resources would an excellent school district do? And those conversations started well before we started to work together. And one thing that you brought is that collaboration to our board and our cabinet. Being a superintendent for 13 years, I've never had that kind of synergy with the board and also our leadership team, and that was a requirement for you. You know, that was, we need to all come together, and you were able to do that, and I hope that that's something that we can move forward and continue on. And lastly, the visibility part of the job also brings challenges as well, because you see people kind of everywhere, and I go to something every night, and so do you, and you're there. And heading those issues off together when we're attending events and really bringing the city in closer as a partner has really proved very beneficial for our school district and the opportunities, not just in this last year, but in the future to come. So I look forward to working with you next year, even though you're not the president. I think what we have is a really tight team here. Doesn't matter where you sit on this dais, it's a really connected team, and I thank you for making that stronger.
Thank you so much, Michael. I appreciate all of your comments, and I am really looking forward to moving forward this next year, because we are really a strong team. I think you can feel it. It's very evident that not only is this board stronger and a team, but we have a strong relationship with our cabinet and our staff and our community, and I'm really looking forward to it. We have so much to look forward to, so thank you. I'm going to next invite up Mr. Halimi, but first I'd just like to say one, a couple things about Gabe. First of all, I just want to thank you, from the bottom of my heart, for taking the step forward and throwing your name in the hat to be considered for the appointment for the Board of Education. I am so thrilled that you've been on this board for the amount of time that you've been on, especially in this past year, but from the moment you got on this board, Gabe, you did not, you were a former student board member, but it's more than that. You had a commitment and a dedication to the school and to this community, and you hit the ground running. You came on this board immediately, and you were immediately focused, and you had an agenda of what you wanted to accomplish, and it was so much fun for me. I just have to tell you, from the minute you got on the board, it was really fun. I loved your professionalism, I loved your point of view, I love your collaborative spirit that you brought to this board. You helped make us a better board, you changed the dynamics of our board, and you are very much a part, like all of our board members, on all of the things that we've been able to accomplish this year. This has not been my accomplishments, this has been this board's accomplishments and our team with Dr. Bregy and his staff, and our community. I can't say that enough, because it is so true. And Gabe, you were just such a great integral part of that, and you brought such great wisdom with you. I loved debating with you. It was really, it was everything that we should have as a board, and you have been a great board member and a public servant, and I know you're not going very far, so I'm not gonna say goodbye to you, because I'm gonna say, I'll see you, goodbye for now, because I know you're not going far, nor will we let you. So I would like to invite you up. The board together has a gift for you in your honor, so come on up. I do want to say as well, what Gabe mentioned is, we had very similar goals when he came on the board, so we really were working, we were working together, step by step and step together, and I really, like all of us, really, we really all wanted the same things, but it just really, it's been such a fun year, so thank you. This is a gift from the board. It is a donation to BATF in your honor of your service.
I love that. Thank you.
And we hope to see you more at BATF, and as well, this is in your honor.
Thank you so much.
It's connected, there you go.
It's connected.
And this is for you.
I'm sure Rebecca wants to take a picture, so.
All right. I will let you speak, and then when you're finished, we'll write the board comments.
I mean, I really wish you hadn't gone first making your comments about me, because now it's harder to follow. So as you all know, I served as student board member 20-plus years ago. I saw Barry Brucker here a few minutes ago. I served when he was president of the board, which was quite a trip. And 20 years later, after attending law school and practicing law and doing a whole bunch of different business activities, I had the honor of being able to move back to Beverly Hills, and 13 months ago, there was a vacancy on the board. I threw my hat in, because I really thought that I could make an impact here in a relatively short period of time. I have four kids and I'm married now, so a four-year term was not gonna work. And through the application process, I was really vocal with this board about what I wanted to accomplish. I looked at all the board members and I told them what inspired me, what was leaving me disappointed about what I was seeing, and how I thought I could make things better or play a role in making them better, and how I really wanted to focus on operational excellence with this board. That's really what I wanted to do. And I promised that I was gonna work hard to make it a healthier board, and I feel like we've accomplished that. I wasn't anyone's number-one choice. I went back and looked at the videos, nobody's, but that's okay. I don't take it personally. You, as board members, after a healthy debate, you guys did unanimously appoint me, and I just think that's like a special thing, like how often do you get to hand-select who the pain in the ass is gonna be that you're gonna sit next to, you know? We worked really hard together, and I went back and looked at that video, and there was something that I wanted to share. Mr. Margot made some comments during that meeting, and I promised we were gonna have fun, so now I'm gonna throw some stuff back at you. He said, "I hammered him a little too hard, I hammered the board a little too hard in the interview process," which was fair, I did. He said, "I don't fully understand what the board does." That's okay. I hope now you think I do understand what the board does. But you said I'd welcome him with open arms, and you said, "This grisly old man is gonna keep one eye open." I think you kept both eyes open. How did I do? And you shaved. No, we had, I promised we were gonna have fun together, and I think we did over the course of the last year. I really love these schools, and that's why I wanted to, that's really why I wanted to fill this role over the last year. Hawthorne, class of '96, Beverly, class of 2000, and it really was a tremendous honor for me to be able to give back over the last year. We accomplished a lot, I'm gonna skip over it, because Mary did such a good job, and I think we all know what those things are, and I'm really proud of them, but the thing that I'm most proud of is just the tone that we've set as a school board and as a district. It really feels, to me, and I think it feels to so many of us in this community, like we've kind of turned a corner, and there's just so much positivity and so much momentum that we've been able to create over the last year, and that's really what I'm the most proud of. A board really cannot function without really acting as a team and without having complementary skill sets. And so, a few words to my fellow board members. First and foremost, I want to thank you all for your service. This is not an easy thing to do, and just having done it for the last year, again, 20-plus years later, now actually sitting through closed session and pouring through materials in a different way than I did when I was student board member, I really just want to thank you all again, because it's a lot of work, and I hope, it's hard for the community to appreciate just how much hard work it is, but it is a lot. Alex, like Eli before you, you make all student board members look really good. Thank you for everything that you do. It's really been an honor to work with you. You helped me keep my hand on the pulse with your reports and everything that you bring to the table. Like you just said about Mary, you're also one of the most outgoing student board members I've seen. Seems like you're at every event, too. So thank you for the role that you play on this board. To Noah, you always say that you're an educator first, and you are. Your depth of knowledge and your understanding of how this school district operates is really unparalleled, and having your experience on the board was so valuable over the last year. We didn't always agree on all of the issues, but the thing that I appreciated about you the most was that you were vocal when we didn't agree, you stated your position, but we were always able to make a decision and move on. And that's what boards need to do, and I think we're stronger when we don't always agree, and so I was really grateful for the relationship that we had. Mandy, I have to admit that I wasn't sure what to make of our working relationship at the very beginning, because unlike this self-proclaimed old man sitting next to you who puts his cards on the table, you sometimes did not at the very beginning, but after every meeting, I walked away being more and more appreciative of you and how you operate. You listen, you're thoughtful, and you just make independent decisions based on how you feel, and I really appreciated sitting next to you. I especially appreciated what you brought to the table with your understanding of social, emotional learning and just putting our kids first all the time. You always brought it back to the kids, and I just really valued working with you. To Rochelle, my dear friend, your selflessness and the love that you have for this community is infectious. You touch so many with what you've done as an educator and what you continue to do, so thank you. Your just deep experience and your love for this school district, it's really special, and it's been a pleasure to work with you. I already said a lot about Mary, but thank you. Again, it was really an honor to be on this board during the year of your presidency. Dr. Bregy, I didn't forget about you. As we talked about when I first started on this board, I thought that you had an even more important role that you could play as a board member. One of the first pieces of feedback I gave you was that I think you need to lead more from the front, and because while these board members might serve in one year, in my case, or four years, or however many years Noah's been on the board, you're the CEO of this school district, and you should outlive all of us on this board, and you have such an important voice and such important experience, and you operate with such a steady hand, and I just really appreciate how you operate and the kind of superintendent you've been. And now this came full circle for me, because in a closed-session matter that I can't talk about recently, you really disagreed with me, and you really pushed back, and I still think I'm right, but I just really appreciate that I got it from you. It felt like I was getting it from you, and that's exactly what we need from you, because you also have great instincts, and I really appreciate when I hear them from you. I also appreciate from you how much you continue to be open to challenging yourself and being challenged by the board. We talked a bit about the strategic planning process, and in just true Dr. Bregy fashion, you already reached out to make sure that you can still pick my brain on how we did some of the things we did in strategic planning and putting together a scorecard, and that's just to make yourself better, make your administration better, and make the school district better, and I really appreciate that. It's hard for people to see that sometimes, and I really appreciate how you operate. Another great sign of leadership is the team that you assemble, and there's too many people to talk about in the cabinet. I know that we want to keep this moving, but Matt, Sandy, Mark, Laura, Tim, Ken, I mean, Rebecca, I mean, just amazing what you've done this year. Rafael hitting the ground, running the way you have over the last six months, and Dustin, I just, where are you? I just can't say enough about Dustin. I mean, just such an amazing team. So I'll just leave the board with a couple of thoughts. One, the mission and the values that we've created should really be at the forefront One, the mission and the values that we've created should really be at the forefront. I know we read them at the beginning of the meetings, but they really help keep us honest. We need to be able to make hard decisions when we need to make them in the name of educational excellence. Please, let's just keep listening to each other and working with each other, keeping the temperature low as we have over the course of the last year. And really maintain as President Wells has done an amazing job doing, like really fostering the working relationships that we have with the city, BHF, police, fire. I mean, it really takes all of us in the community to get to educational excellence. And we've got to keep pushing that. Okay, I'm done lecturing. The last thing I want to mention is when I was being considered for this appointment, I gave this board my word that I wasn't going to run for reelection. I wasn't going to run for election. I was never elected. I wanted this appointment because I wanted to make an impact. And but from the time that I was even being considered for this appointment, there was one person that I was talking to a lot, and that was Judy. Because as much as I was very happy to be given this opportunity, I remember telling Judy at that time when we were both being considered, "If it's not me, I really hope it's you." Because I think Judy, you are a special leader. You have already given so much to this district. And I can't tell you how meaningful it is to me coming off the board that you're the one that's going to be stepping in and sitting in my seat. Well, not literally in my seat. You'll be one over. But it just means a lot that it's going to be you. And I'm so excited to see you as a leader on this board and all the accomplishments that you're going to have. Final thank yous to my wife because without her understanding and support, I never would have been able to do this. For the community to embracing me, thank you. And as Mary said, I'm not going very far. I had a lot of fun this year. And can't wait to be, stay involved. Thank you, guys.
Okay, Duncan, let's go around. Alex, go ahead.
Mr. Halimi, when I found out that you were a former BHUSD student board member, I got really excited. And you've been a board member who not only understands my position so well, but you served not so long ago that we still know so many of the same people and so many of the same teachers, which has been so much fun talking about. But what I really admire about you is how you've continued to be such an active member in public service throughout the community, from the time that you were a student at Beverly up until now, and now that you have your own children in the district. And when I think about that, I think about how I hope to maybe one day fall in your footsteps and maybe be back on this board in 20 years and sitting up there. And just as a student, thank you so much for all you've done this past year to enrich the board and enrich the district, coming into a position in the middle of the school year and especially, you know, during the midst of the pandemic and everything else. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Alex.
I will miss you.
Mr. Halimi, Gabe, former student and now my colleague. It has been a pleasure to serve with you this past year on the board. You didn't miss a beat as you accepted this position for only one year. Your background and understanding from your experience as a student board representative of the board in your senior year at Beverly Hills High School gave you the opportunity to just fit right in, and you really didn't miss a beat. Your years as a successful lawyer and businessman gave you a different viewpoint, insight, and your opinions on many issues. I welcomed your thoughts at all times. I really appreciated them. I will remember one thing that you did. I like to think of one thing. The research that you did during COVID, which helped us make a decision about masking. I can still remember that presentation that night. It was amazing. I hope someday you will run for the school board. You have been such a great asset to the one that you just took a one-year seat on. It has been amazing. And I, for one, I'm really going to miss you. Thank you for your work.
I'll miss you, too. Thank you.
I sort of remember what I said during those sort of informal things. I said, "Maybe he just had too much Starbucks coffee before he came in."
I think you did say that.
I did say that because you're very bright, but you're very, you know, from a psychologist standpoint, I thought, you know, maybe he's just like a little hypomanic, you know. But the irony is, of course, I'm the one taker whenever you come with your cold brew.
That's true.
And he always says, "Who wants some?" I'm like, "Hit me up."
100% of the time.
Right, so just a short commentary here. True honor to have you return to the boardroom some 20 years after you last sat here as a student board member. Your ability to think critically about a myriad of issues that fell under the board's purview was outstanding. Your legal background and business sense enabled you to see things on the horizon that many of us did not see. I thank you for bringing such issues to the forefront of our discussions and decisions. I thank you for facing contentious topics such as the great masking debate in which you nobly leaned toward the best interests of our children. And I also want to recognize you and your family and your spouse and your kids because I always said to myself, "I don't know how he does it." That guy has four little ones. I think they're under five.
Yeah, five and under.
Yeah, I was just like, you know, and then, you know, gotta love him when there were a few Zoom meetings from his home and, you know, you hear like the kids, and I'm like, "Man, those days are over." But so I really give you credit, and I want to thank, I think your wife's name is Shirley. So I'm very grateful, and we'll get you back somehow. So watch out, Shirley. But anyway, best of luck and thank you.
Thank you, Mandy.
Gabe, thank you. My colleagues have said pretty much everything I was going to say. But I will point out to everyone that right after Gabe got appointed, it was about the time my father passed and we were having shiv at our house. And he came over, and I didn't know him at all, and he didn't come over to talk about business. But as a classy guy that he was, he did come to my house and sat with me for a while. So I do thank you for that. And I also thank you because you proved that I do not need to wear a tie to sit in these meetings. I don't think I can give it up, but you've shown that it could be done. So thank you. Or you don't know how to tie one and just didn't want us to know.
I miss that era.
Gabe, thank you very much.
Thanks, Alex.
I know I already spoke, Gabe, but I think I want to highlight one thing about Gabe. I mean, he did come in when we were interviewing and he was very, he had very strong opinions and he had very clear goals that he wanted. But the thing about Gabe is Gabe is very, he's very of the heart, and he's actually very mushy. So I think his decisions have always been about the kids. His decisions have always been about what's best. And I think that, you know, when he's giving his opinion and we're sparring and we're, you know, we're debating, it's always coming from his heart, and I really appreciate that about you. It is definitely, that's what I see first when I see you, Gabe, is that that is truly who you are. I think you mentioned one time that you said your wife said you'll cry at anything, and I believe it. And I also would say that I really, for me personally, I just really enjoyed debating with you. I loved talking to you and really, we could really go at it, and it always stayed above board. And it always, and we could always find a solution, but we always could really just tackle a topic and really go around and go after it. And it was really fun. So thank you very much, and I'm really going to miss you.
Thank you. I miss you, too.
Well, Mr. Halimi, it's been quite a year. I want to thank you for so many things that you've done in the last year. I think people sometimes forget that we're a business as well as an educational institution. And we have to be sound as a business. And you brought that back to the board, to our entire school district. There's a lot of accountability. Things were never passed over. You would always ask for the backup or the data, or how is this best for students? How is this best for staff? You asked questions about how is this best for the internal community, the external community. And with you not being shy in this year, you weren't afraid to have those conversations in public or with our board or with me personally. And I know I'm a much better superintendent based on just our experience working together this year. And just for the record, because as your employee, I do not get the opportunity to vote when we were sitting right here and we went through all of the interviews. And I think there were eight people or so that we interviewed. I don't get to vote, but I have my own notes. And I can tell you, and you can ask my team, I had you and Mrs. Manichari as one and two on my list.
How convenient.
So you can ask my team. Send the PRA request. I have it. So I want to thank you for just so many things. And with our strategic plan, the accountability piece, I do think that that is probably the most robust plan I've ever seen. And I welcome people to look at any other school districts that have a very fluffy strategic plan. This is anything but that. And because of your leadership and your vision, you helped us get there, and I thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Dr. Breggy.
Left quite a legacy.
Thank you all so much. Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is the installation of our re-elected board member, Rochelle Marcus. And before I invite her up, I just want to say that it is absolutely my honor today that I get to install Mrs. Marcus as you begin your second term as a board member. And I just want to say that Rochelle Marcus is probably one of the most beloved people that I know in this community. I would challenge anybody to dispute that. And she has taught generations of families, and she has changed so many lives, and she's affected so many lives. And it's really been my honor to serve with Rochelle these past two years. I have so much respect for her and for her wisdom, and I have so much trust in her to do the right thing. She is an independent thinker. She does her work. And it's always about the kids at the end of the day. That's where she always falls on the line, is about what is best for our students and for our community. And you can trust her for that. And I just want to say that it's really going to be my honor to be able to serve with you for the next two years. So please come join me, and I'm so honored to be able to install Rochelle today.
Is the thing up here so I can?
Yes, it is. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Rochelle Marcus, do solemnly swear
I, Rochelle Marcus, do solemnly swear
that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And that I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
And that I well and faithfully will discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think I left my notes at the, and I was going to make a few comments. So I'm going to go back over to the desk over there and make the comments from there, so give me a chance.
I don't know. We all must have one great mind, I think. No, this was not what I wanted, but that's okay. But that's okay. They'll bring it, the pad. Thank you, Gabe, yes. I made some comments on there as I was, we all had great thoughts about speaking to members of the board tonight. And of course, it has been my pleasure to work with the most amazing board throughout the last four years. It has changed a little bit, but it has been an honor for me. And I come around April of the past year when it came time to think about running for reelection. There was a great deal of problem in my life. As many of you may know, my husband was very ill, and I was debating whether I wanted to run again. And unfortunately, because he passed away, the decision became very apparent that my heart is in the school district, and I couldn't leave it at this time. My work was unfinished. So I decided to run again, and I want to thank the community for being supportive and re-electing me to a second term on the school board. And I just want to make a few comments to some of the people that have shared the board with me. Alex, I want you to know how much I've been sitting next to you during the first half of your term. You listen, you ask great questions, and you make wonderful comments, and you give, oh, thank you, and you give very well-informed student body reports. You didn't miss a beat from the previous board member, and I really love them. And I know you will continue to do a wonderful job as the student board rep for the next semester. So thank you for being there for me. I know that she's going to be coming up pretty soon, but I just want to congratulate Judy on her being elected and her campaign. I know she's going to add value and insight to the board during the next four years, and I look forward to working with you. So welcome aboard. Not yet. Dr. Stern, Mandy, as I got to know your name, I have come to know you really well during the past years, and it has been my pleasure. I appreciate your expertise and knowledge about the special ed program as it helped me understand and make more informed and better decisions, and for that, I'm very grateful. I wish you good luck in your new position when it appears on this little board there, and wish you good luck at the board vice president. So thank you for everything. Noah, I guess we're going to get a chance to say to you, but I guess I have to say something now, too. During my four years working with you, I can attest you are in it for the education, truly, and that makes you special. I know you're going to do a great job as president. You've had some practice. And I look forward to working with you and want to wish you the best of luck next year. They left the best part off. Dr. Breggy is here somewhere. Uh-oh, what happened to Dr. Breggy? There should be another piece of paper there. No, I already spoke to Mary, but Mary knows how much I love her and how much I appreciate it. I want to thank John for those unbelievable words that you gave to her. You took so many of the words right out of my mouth. I know how hard she works because I've been recipient of many phone calls during the course of her term as presidency, and we had some very long, long discussions. And I love you, and I'm looking forward to the next year, Mary. And to Dr. Breggy, it has been a wonderful experience working with you the last four years. I appreciated that you were always so available for the questions, suggestions, advice, especially while I was the president. There were two changes that occurred, although there were many, many changes as Mary outlined and as everybody outlined during their presentations. But the two that stuck with me more than anything were, one, the reconfiguration, going from four K8 schools to two K5 schools and the middle school. That was an exciting time during my year as a member of the board. And the other thing was the development of the strategic plan, which was adapted. I can remember how much Isabel Hacker asked for it while she was on the board and how finally it came to fruition with my being on the board. I happened to be on the committee, and I was so grateful that I was there. And now we have revised and adopted a new mission that really reveals that we are all here for educational excellence, and for that, I'm very proud. I am looking forward to the next four years and finding ways to provide the best education for our students. And I know, under the board that we have just elected, we will be able to do that. So I want to thank you and just have one or two, a few more comments that I need to make. I want to thank a few people that are here for me tonight. They're very, my family's very small. But I want to thank my son, Marty, my daughter-in-law, Debbie, and my two marvelous, beautiful, brilliant, intelligent grandchildren, Elan and Aleah Marcus. And I want to say hello to my daughter, Joy, who's home. She's under the weather and couldn't be here tonight. So thank you again for the vote of confidence. I look forward to four more years, and thank you.
Okay, next, we are going to install Judy Manichari. Come on up, Judy. Installing Judy this evening is the Honorable Richard A. Stone Jr. Judge Stone served as judge in the Los Angeles Superior Court for 15 years, where he presided over unlimited jurisdiction civil cases, handling some of the court's most difficult jury trials. He also served Los Angeles for another 14 years as a deputy district. He also served Los Angeles for another 14 years as a deputy district attorney. During his tenure as a judge, he was the assistant supervising judge of the West District. That is so cute. And managed settlement program, achieving equitable resolutions in a variety of complex and high-stakes civil disputes. Judge Stone currently works to resolve matters involving business and commercial contracts, employment, insurance, intellectual property, and real estate. As a neutral Judge Stone had one of the fastest starts in the ADR industry, quickly becoming a sought-after choice among both counsel and their clients. Throughout his over three-year decades of service, Judge Stone has endeavored to serve and honor his local legal community, both in and out of the courtroom. Please welcome Judge Stone to install our newly, new board-elect Judy Manichari.
Just, just, let me take just a second. I graduated El Rodeo in 1970. I graduated Beverly Hills High School in 1974. My mother graduated El Rodeo. My uncles graduated El Rodeo, Beverly Hills High School. I've been part of this community my entire life, basically starting at about four and a half years old. I want to congratulate the community on selecting Judy. Who is gonna bring a unique skill set to this school board, which is magnificent. And obviously, listening to what everybody had to say tonight, she will be a welcome addition. Also, our student board member, back when my kids were in the Beverly Hills School District. Good luck to you and your future endeavors. I'd look for you in court, but I'm not there anymore, thank God. So let's do this Judy, you ready?
Yes.
All right, raise your right hand. I Judy Manichari.
I Judy Manichari.
Thank you. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Not duty, duties. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Good evening and thank you all for being here with us today. I decided to run to be a trustee for the Beverly Hills Unified School District's governing board because I believe I can make a difference. I knew I could apply my professional skills as a real estate construction and business attorney and my personal experience as a product of our school system for the betterment of our schools, our beautiful community, and most importantly, our children. I ran to help our schools reach their full potential in every way, in academics, facilities, programs, and to work toward uniting our community after an unprecedented time. Through this process, I learned the most surprising thing, just how united our community can be. And more so, I learned that our community has the same goal, excellence. I've said it before and I'll say it again, we can love BHUSD and also want more for and from BHUSD at the same time. I'm here because I love and want more for and from our school district. And I definitely didn't get here alone. I would like to thank the amazing group of parents, community leaders, dignitaries, and BHUSD supporters who helped me throughout this process. The group of incredible moms and dads who share the common goal of navigating our schools toward excellence. My amazing team who are with me every step of the way, who helped create my materials, reached out to other parents and residents, passed out lawn signs, made calls on my behalf, wore Team Judy t-shirts and hats with excitement, and who encouraged me to just be me even at times when I felt discouraged. I thank you. I would also like to thank the accomplished community members who endorsed me and took the time to advise and counsel, all of whom I appreciate very much. I've also learned from the other candidates during this election as their ideas and perspectives shed light to the fact that there are a myriad of issues we need to address during the upcoming term. I'd like to take a moment to share the five specific goals which I ran on and plan to focus on. First, to ensure transparency, accountability, and progress on our facilities, maintenance, and construction programs. Second, to provide teachers with critical resources and support in order to elevate academic rigor and test scores. Third, to enhance student programs, activities, and experiences. Next, to promote the advancement of our security, hardware, and software, to continue to work closely with the experts in our city, the BHPD, with whom we forged an essential partnership. And last but not least, to strengthen the synergistic relationship between the city, our Beverly Hills community, and our school district. I am laser-focused on collaborating with other board members, administrative staff, teachers, faculty, and parents to get the job done. Get the job done with transparency, with integrity, and with respect for the various views coming from our community. And I know that since I'm here, that means you all want that too. I'd like to congratulate you, Mrs. Marcus, on your reelection. I am so thrilled to learn with you and work alongside you. I also want to congratulate Mrs. Wells on an incredible year as president, really incredible, and welcome Mr. Margot as our new president. I look forward to working with all of my colleagues on the board, including Dr. Stern and Alex, as I know that together we can accomplish whatever goals we commit to. Most importantly, I'd like to take my, thank my family and friends for your love and support and care, and especially a big thank you to my husband and my kids who understand why this work is such important work. And who thanks to the campaign now love to order Indian food and our takeout experts who testify that DoorDash delivers way faster than Postmates. Thank you for your patience. And here we are together, onto the next chapter for BHUSD. I am so thrilled to get started at this work with you. Thank you for your support.
Look at Judy. Congratulations. Congratulations Judy and Rochelle. This is really exciting. Okay. We'll pass this down for Gabe.
Gabe, don't leave without your door prize.
We know you tried, but it's gonna follow you, so.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the election of our president. May I have a nomination?
I will nominate Noah Margot for the position of president of the Board of Education.
I'll second.
Second the motion.
Mrs. Marcus will second. Motion was made by Dr. Stern and seconded by Mrs. Marcus. I'll let Mrs. Marcus have that. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero with a preferential vote from Alex Bodden. Congratulations Noah.
Yes, I do accept the nomination. Thank you.
Okay, this evening to install, as a ceremonial installation for our newest president, Mr. Noah Margot, we have Dr. Brian Goldberg, who served for eight years on the Board of Education from 27 to 2015, serving twice as board president. Along with his colleagues, Dr. Goldberg successfully transitioned BHUSD to a basic aid district, passed the A through G graduation requirements, and helped to create a $10 million endowment, which has secured our district's finances since. Dr. Goldberg saw through successful negotiations with our teachers' union that increased instructional minutes for students. Dr. Goldberg holds a PhD in political science from the University of Southern California, my alma mater, and is the former co-chair of the Department of Political Science at the American Jewish University, as well as serving as a professor of political science at three local community colleges. After his terms on the board, Dr. Goldberg completed postgraduate degrees in clinical psychology from Columbia University and Ryokin College, and is a licensed clinical psychologist in private practice in Los Angeles. Dr. Goldberg and his wife, Eleonora, are most proud of raising their three children, who all attended BHUSD schools. Sophia, class of 2018, Esther, class of 2021, and Ari, who is set to graduate this June as part of Beverly's class of 2023. I would like to welcome Dr. Brian David Goldberg.
Noah, before I swear you, and I would like to say a few words, if I may. It's been a long time since I've been up here to speak at a board meeting. So first, you've heard a lot of people talk about the fact, the commitment of time that it takes for individuals to serve on the board. Noah is the longest-serving board member currently on this board. And I think that says a lot about Noah and his commitment to our schools and to this notion of educational excellence. When Noah first was elected to the Board of Education, he brought a lot of interesting and different perspectives to the board that I had been serving on at that time. Noah was the first person on the board that I served with that had actual experience as an educator in a K-12 school. And he brought that knowledge and that expertise in a way to help educate the board in terms of what our students were experiencing and what our teachers were experiencing in the classroom. He also had experience and knowledge with construction, being a licensed, I believe a licensed contractor, correct? And still is. And as you know, we've been going through construction projects for a very long time. And so Noah brought that expertise with him. Noah has served this community with honor and distinction. I don't even know, he's in his third term now. I don't know how many years it is because he got that extra one. Good job, buddy. Got that extra year in that term. But in all seriousness, he has spent the majority of his adult life now serving this community. Noah, like myself, has three children and two of his children have already graduated. One is going to graduate soon. Not, not as soon as Ari, but soon, hopefully, right?
Hopefully, yeah. That's the plan.
And I think that that is a very important perspective for a board member to have. Noah has not only had to live with the decisions that he's made, but his children have had to live with the decisions he's made. And that is an extra special matter of pressure and also of importance when someone is making decisions on behalf of the Board of Education. I want to share one story that I really got to know Noah and understood how passionate and how committed he was and how much he wanted to serve. Many of you know this already, but Noah was only the second candidate in Beverly Hills Unified School District to run as a write-in candidate. He wasn't even on the ballot. I was running at the same time as Noah in that campaign. And Noah was very, very graceful and very gracious about his campaign. But he is a very competitive person. And this is something I very much appreciate about Noah. And he may not remember this, but on the night of the election, on the night of the election, I was just impressed that Noah had won a write-in candidacy. Noah was so happy. I won 10 out of 11 districts in Beverly Hills that night. But Noah, Noah came up to me, do you remember this Noah? Came up to me and said, "I won Beverly Vista. Ha ha Goldberg." Because he wanted to win his home district. This is a true story, people. That's how important it was to him. But it really was because you wanted to serve and you wanted to make a difference. And you've served with distinction and honor. And it's a privilege to be here tonight to swear you in as president yet again. I know that with your experience and with your commitment to this district, that you are going to continue to do great things for this district, for our students, for our staff, for our teachers, for the community. And so congratulations. You are the definition of a mensch. So congratulations. I can't believe Laura's letting you do this again. Okay. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I Noah Margot.
I Noah Margot.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
I'm gonna ask Dr. Stern about that. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Mazel tov. Congratulations. They say the third time's a charm. Who, who says that actually? Who's "they"? Well, supposedly, they are some early 19th century British writers who were fascinated by either the Holy Trinity or an old English law that stated, "If a man sentenced to hang survived three attempts, he would be set free." Now, please don't look for connection between the last reference and the year I'm about to embark on. The important takeaway here is the rule of three. It's a standard. Friends, Romans, countrymen. Life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. The butcher, the baker, and the candlestick maker. Most films are broken into three acts, and a tripod is the epitome of balance. But three is also the minimum number of votes required to get anything passed on a board. Fortunately, during my three terms, there has been less than a handful of critical decisions that were enacted with just three votes. Bonds were passed, auditoriums closed, and a middle school was created with just three votes. But we don't strive for three. We strive for unity, for consensus. Please understand that while not every vote that has, has and yet to come across this board will be unanimous, all of us, all of us sincerely believe we are casting our votes in the interest of the district's success. This and past boards have worked and will continue to work tirelessly to put in motion all of the elements needed for our district to succeed. Three years ago, there's three again, our world was upended. Education is at a place no one could have really expected. Watching students struggle to adapt to this new phase in learning made me realize that the lessons they learn on Apex or Zoom or even TikTok do not compare to the ones learned directly from our amazing teachers in the classrooms. There is a reason why learning the preamble to the Constitution in Mr. Shaver's eighth-grade history class has stuck with me. Don't ask me to repeat it now, although I can see some of you going "we the people" in your heads. Why I will always think of the former nun-turned-seventh-grade-science teacher, Mrs. Smith, when I pick up a leaf from the ground and try to classify the tree. Ginkgo, Mrs. Smith, the tree was a ginkgo. Why my treky-loving English teacher, Mrs. Walker, will forever be associated with both Shakespeare and Star Trek: The Wrath of Khan. It all happened in the classroom. Their inspiration, their dedication, and their overwhelming effect on my learning was lightning in a bottle. That is why I want to return the focus back to the classroom, to those wonderful moments that make up our students' education. And that is why, among my other responsibilities during my final year with the gavel, I am putting the spotlight back on education, literally. I will be creating a regular
I will be creating a regular video segment called "Now Noah Knows", where I will meet one-on-one with some of our incredible teachers and learn something new or something long forgotten, while at the same time showcasing their unique teaching methods. The idea of being a lifelong learner starts here and should never end. I'm currently learning Italian, by the way. So to everyone here tonight, thank you for supporting me and this board and our past and future endeavors. Dr. Goldberg, thank you for swearing me in on those wonderful words, jarring my memory. Brian and I go back to the beginning of all this for me. I want to thank Lorraine and Tara and Jill and my mom and, of course, my own personal baker, Laura, for the delicacies you will soon experience. Thank you, Dr. Breggy, and your dedicated staff for taking under consideration whatever out-of-the-box ideas I'm about to toss in your direction. I want to thank the four Maws, and by that I mean Mandy, Marcus, Manicherry, and Mary. I'm the fifth one, by the way. And thank you to my own ma or mom, Abby, who is very overprotective, so please don't make her angry. Thank you to Solomon and Jax and Reese. Jax is working, can't be here tonight, for putting up with this craziness again. And finally, a gigantic thank you to my bride, who puts the rock in my rock and roll, the incredible doctor, Commissioner, Vice Chair, Laura. I look forward to what this next year brings, but even more so to what our students will achieve. Thank you. Grazie oro, meritimacho alavora.
Okay. And to keep things moving along and get us to those wonderful delicacies quicker, I will call for a nomination of Vice President. I would, before, sorry, before we do that, can I ask my colleagues to consider that we combine Vice President and Clerk? Most California districts actually don't have a Vice President. They have clerks. So my thought was to combine Vice President and Clerk, and then we can adjust the bylaws as possible. It's just a suggestion. Up for deliberation.
I think that there's another person who would like to be the clerk, so I'm not sure that...
That's fine with me.
Okay. Okay, then I will entertain nomination for Vice President.
I'll make a nomination for Dr. Stern for Vice President.
Do you accept the nomination?
I accept the nomination.
Can I have a second?
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Motion carries. One second. Wrong one. I have yours, one second. Somebody took my paper. Here it is. Okay. For more than a decade, this is to swear in Dr. Stern. For more than a decade, Nathan Kruger has been an active parent organizer within BHUSD. He co-founded the Beverly Science Fair in 2015, served as BVMS PT co-president for three years, and is currently the Vice Chair of the BHUSD Citizen Bond Overnight Committee.
Overnight?
He has a, sorry, oversight. Been a long night, Mandy.
We don't have overnights.
He also has one of the most impressive holiday lawn lawns that you'll see in the city. And he's proud to help swear in his dear friend, Dr. Amanda Stern. Mr. Kruger.
I was hiding, I was hiding. Good evening, everyone. I should have strengthened my resume after coming after Dr. Goldberg here, so. So, Mandy, I'll just say a couple of quick words. Mandy, I first met you at Beverly Vista Playground at the carnival when it was a K-8, and there was a lot of little kids running around when we had little kids at BV. And you were so passionate about the speaker program that you were working on. And I was like, "This is a woman that's gonna do something for the district." So when you were elected, we got more than just a great smile, but we got somebody that's trained in development and education, and you ended up just being a really collaborative force here. So, thank you. And Noah, you're gonna have a good collaborator here, potentially a future President of the Board. So, all right. All right, so raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Mandy Stern.
I, Mandy Stern.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Great, congratulations.
Thank you. All right.
This is a short one, I promise. Thank you, I am honored to accept the nomination and the vice presidency. This holiday season, I am grateful and I am inspired by the support so many give to the students and families of this community. We have a challenging year ahead. We continue to face pandemic-related learning loss, mental health problems, intense political tension, and a robust but complex construction program. This collective anxiety is tempered, however, by the phenomenal success of our students. Some examples include our National Merit Scholars, our Science Olympiads, our tennis athletes, and our visual performing arts students, including those in Singing in the Rain, which was incredible. After working with this board for over two years, I know exactly how we will face our challenges and our triumphs, and that is together. I would also like to thank my wife, Lisa, my children, and my wonderful friends and colleagues. Thank you.
With that, I'll call for a nomination of Clerk.
I would like to make a motion to elect Mary Wells as the Clerk for our district.
I'll second.
I will accept.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carries five oh. Okay, now down to some quick business. Item A, can I have a motion for the approval of the annual motions?
I make a motion to approve the annual motions.
I'll second.
Thank you, moved by Mrs. Marcus, seconded by Mrs. Wells. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, thank you, motion carries five zero.
I will make an approval of the certification of the signatures.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you very much.
I will make a motion to approve the board meeting dates for January 2023 through December of 2023.
Thank you very much, made by Mrs. Marcus, seconded by Dr. Stern. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And now we are looking at the selection of our annual representative to LAXA. I have just completed my last meeting last night in this role. Wonderful dinner by Chef Marilyn. Check her cooking out, it was very good.
Soul food. It's good.
We can either take a suggestion or is anybody volunteering to be the representative?
I'm happy to volunteer for it since I am currently the Secretary-Treasure, so if anyone else would like to join me?
Are you willing to do both jobs? I guess it'll be fairly easy because you'll be at all the meetings anyway, right, Mary?
But you can, I would love for you to...
I would be happy to join you on occasion. Okay?
Yeah, all board members are welcome to attend those. It's not limited to the representative, just so people know.
Would you like to be the designated voting member?
I will do that if you want.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so we're approving then Mrs. Marcus for the Representative to LAXA. I don't think that that needs... Ms. Kraushauer, does that actually need a vote? Okay, thank you.
I think the next one needs a vote.
All right, now we're looking at the election of a representative to the LA County Committee on School District Organization. It's October, November. It's a, you do one thing, I think, in this position all year.
I don't know who did it the past year. Did we have any?
I think I did it.
I'm happy to do it.
Anybody take...
I actually have two other commissions I'm interested in focusing on.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
I think we have to vote on that one.
Yeah, we need a motion for that. So I'll move to appoint Mary as the Representative to the LA County Committee on School District Organization.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Then we have to sign our annual affidavit of residence. We all have an affidavit saying that we are residents, and we will sign that. There's no other action to be taken, Ms. Kraushauer, correct? Okay, thank you. We will get those turned in. If they do not turn it in, they don't come back. Okay, thank you.
I believe she has mine.
All right, now we're going to do our board liaisons. The city liaisons are the President and Vice President, so. There you go. Joint Powers Agreement Liaison is usually the President and Vice President as well, but I know, Ms. Wells, you want to continue to work.
Yes.
But...
I wondered if Mrs., Dr. Stern was interested in that position because I do believe that Mary has done so much with the joint. She's already been on the committee, is that correct?
Well, we just started that, so I would love to stay on that committee.
That's what I'm asking. So, is that all right with you, Mandy? Okay, fine. Okay, so the...
Yeah, just so people are clear, there's two kind of delegations that meet with the city. There's just the city liaisons, which are always the President and Vice President, and then there's the JPA Negotiation Team, which in this case will be myself and Mrs. Wells. Anybody, everybody good with that? I don't think we need a vote on that, so. Ms. Kraushauer, you have all that? Great, thank you. Health and Safety Commission?
I would like to make a comment about that. I spent the last couple of years, and it's been a pleasure to do it, and I would love to do it again. But I would also like to do the Health and, I mean, the Human Relations. And in speaking with Dr. Stern just now, maybe we can work it together so we both do it in tandem. I don't know how you feel about that.
That sounds wonderful. I think the two of us doing those commissions is a good idea, and we can, that will offer some flexibility for both of us to be a part of that.
Great, I would love that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is everyone in concurrence with that?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. District Finance Committee?
I would like to serve on that committee if it's possible, but I don't know if anybody else wants to.
Ms. Kraushauer, we have two for that?
We've had two.
Up to two?
I'll join you, Rochelle.
Okay.
We can have two representatives.
Okay, Rochelle and Judy will do that? Thank you. Citizens Bond Oversight Committee?
I would like to defer that to our new member, if that's possible.
I'll be more than happy to do that.
Okay.
I'm happy to serve that with you.
All righty, thank you very much. Wellness Committee, I'm currently serving on that and would like to stay on that. Anybody else like to join me? You're welcome to.
I'll join, you know it.
Okay. Apparently wellness isn't as important as we thought.
It is important to me. I think it's fantastic.
All right, so then Mrs. Wells and, she actually put the "well" in Wellness Committee. Mrs. Wells and I will stay on the Wellness Committee, thank you. And finally, the CTE Committee. I know Mrs. Wells and I are currently serving on that.
I would like to join that committee. At this time, I know that in the past I was on the committee and somehow it got changed to the President and Vice President, and I was sort of not able to attend. I could have attended the meetings, but was, because of the Brown Act, I couldn't attend. So I really would like to get back on that committee. I have a very strong affection for that particular committee. So if it's possible, I'd like to go back if there's somebody else that wants to take it out.
I would like to continue on to, just because I have a lot of foothold in the CTE program. So, Mrs. Wells, do you mind if Rochelle and I do that?
No.
Okay. Is everybody good with that?
You good, Judy?
I'll look at Dr. Stern.
I'm saying, no, no, I'm just saying CTE is Career Technical Education. Just for all of you, because there's so many acronyms.
That was for everyone's clarification.
That's right.
Mandy knew what it was. It wasn't like a clever ruse to...
It's not concussion, something, protocol.
I'm gonna have people remind me what that acronym is.
It's such a great program.
Okay, so, so Mrs. Marcus and I will stay on the CTE Committee.
I'm happy to be a backup for either of you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mrs. Wells. With that, we are going to move into public comment. If these folks are here, Vlad Strickman? Is Vlad here? Speaking on his behalf. I'm sorry? Are you Reeve?
Yes.
Okay. So you can speak as Reeve. He has to be here to cede his time, though, but you can speak on your behalf. No. The other one's not here. Go ahead, sir.
So today, all I'm here to do is to give out a few of the board members' notice of intention to circulate a recall petition. This is to Amanda Stern, Dr. Amanda Stern. That is all, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Kraushauer, are any other cards turned in? Thank you very much. Colleagues, I don't know if you have any other comments to make tonight. I know we've all said a lot, otherwise... Well, I'll start with Alex, if she does have any. You don't have to. Just, good, thank you. Mrs. Wells?
I just would like to officially welcome Judy Manicherry to our board and, of course, Rochelle as well. It's really nice to have you join us up here. I'm really looking forward to serving with you. You ran a really wonderful campaign, and as well, Mrs. Marcus. And I feel that this board is going to be a strong team very quickly, and it will be a seamless transition. And I'm really looking forward to you being here. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
And I want you all to get to the goodies that are out there because I know, not only did Laura do some, I also did some, that coffee cake is out there, and I know that...
Didn't know that. I would have thrown it kudos your way.
Right. So I just want to thank the Madrigals for their appearance tonight. I always enjoy listening to them. And I'm gonna go tomorrow night at Beverly Vista, for those of you that don't know about it, and I'm gonna watch a little bit of Mamma Mia with the kids from Beverly Vista. I hope I see you all there. Thank you.
I don't have any further comment at this time.
I just want to quickly say thank you to my team that is out here and supporting our new board. And congratulations to our new board and our new officers. What you heard from Mrs. Wells, that is a tremendous amount of work, and that doesn't happen without a strong team, as you've heard over and over. And I think our community expects a lot, as they should, from our administration and from our staff. But we wouldn't be where we are today without the work that is brought before us. And this is a very strong team. It's the strongest leadership team I've ever had in my entire career. And I just want to thank all of them for everything that they do every day to make this a very strong team. And also to our union presidents and our union officers who work collaboratively with us and keep a really positive relationship to make all of this come together.
Thank you, Dr. Breggy. And with that, meeting is adjourned. We'll see you back on January 17.